Please stand and draw your last question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to tonight's regular school board meeting for independent school district number 544. I'll call it to order. I'll make a note that as we progress through our agenda, we'll stop at six o'clock for a couple of public meetings. So with that, we will begin the meeting and have the court establish our forum, please. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Present. Matthew Limkey.
Here.
Missy Hermes here, Steven Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum. Very well, thank you. We have our next item, which is to get a motion to approve the agenda. Go ahead, there it is slightly adjusted.
Okay, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda approval? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, aye. That's approved and we'll have some, a resolution to thank Bethlehem Lutheran Church for their donations to the Special Olympics Junior Team and the Otter Angel Account. The Otter Angel Account is an account created anonymously to assist families to pay for student meals. And thank you to Geraldine Kiel for her donation to the Otter Angel Account. Thank you to our board members, Steven Biggessa for his donation of two violins, a guitar, and an accordion. Also, thank you to Becky Sanmore for her donation of solo books to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
Steve, did you give up on learning the accordion?
No, I think my pulcher jamming days are over. It was a sad day.
Okay, quick. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. We have reports tonight and it starts with Derek Adams, our activities coordinator. Hello, and we will get a fall sports update.
Okay, so I'm just gonna hit a couple of highlights. One thing we like to look at is our numbers. It's, while it doesn't tell the whole story, it gives us kind of an indication of how healthy our programs are. I always go back five years and as you can see, we're at, we had 346 students participate in our high school activities just this fall. So again, well over 50%. And that does not count anything that we're doing in the arts, other than I have Fall Musical on here. But it doesn't everything arts, music, things like that. A lot of those are repeat numbers because a lot of our students are actually in athletics and music and things like that. So again, we have a very high percentage of our students that are involved with activities. Again, numbers are pretty consistent, especially when you go back five years. With our increase in enrollment, of course, we expect our numbers to go up a little bit. Doesn't mean that we have that many more spots on teams and things like that, so it's not going to go up proportionately to our student body. But we have seen an increase in some of our activities. Probably the biggest thing going around the state and the biggest talk amongst activities directors when it comes to numbers are there, ever since COVID, there has been a decline in certain sports for girls. We haven't, we're not sure why yet. It's across the board. Basketball, we're just seeing it right now. And of the nine CLC schools, I think five of them are, four or five are just fielding two teams, barring the JV, no ninth grade team. We're one of those until after Christmas when we'll be including some eighth graders when they're done with their season. But we're a school of about 600 some. There are schools of 1,200, 1,300, and one that's had 1,700 kids in it and they do not, cannot field three full teams. So it's something that's going around the state. We're not exactly sure why. It seems to be hitting some sports like basketball and things like that. But it's something we're definitely looking at and trying to figure out why would that be, especially when it really seems to be towards one gender. We did not run debate this year. We had a couple that were interested, but it wasn't, we wouldn't have been able to field the teams. We talked to them and we decided at that point not to run it so we could focus more on speech. We have the same coach for both. And I've mentioned in previous meetings that that was the other, along with theater. Theater and speech debate were the other big victims of COVID because they are so reliant on in-person, even more than some of the athletics were. Because let's be honest, most, through youth programs and stuff, a lot of athletics really got slowed down or stopped. It may have stopped briefly in the schools, but it was still going. Those activities really rely on the school and the in-person. And so our numbers are up to start off with. Speech is just gonna get going here. They really get going in January and start their season. But early indications are our numbers are up and then the hope is we will have debate again, obviously in the fall. Touch on Fall Musical, we had more kids involved this year and it was just such a great performance. To say that our Fall Musical is definitely back is an understatement. Great performance. We ran it just one weekend and we had as many people see it in that one weekend as probably we had, just looking at the ticket sales compared to the other years with multiple weekends. So they did a phenomenal job already talking about next year and what they're gonna do. We are going to finally get our middle school musical going, which is good. We had it going in the year 2019, 2020. They had their final dress rehearsal. They had the entire set built and the stage ready to go. And then we all went home and never came back that spring. So that actually sat up on the stage for about the next six months, that, the set for the musical, the middle school musical. But we will, we are gonna get that going again this year. And that's really gonna help our high school program and all of our drama. You can take a look at, I listed again, our performers of the week, where we had more CLC performers of the week this year than any other fall. Same with our all-conference honorable mentions. I do want to take a minute here though, just to highlight one thing. We had one team that got sportsmanship, and that was our volleyball team, that got the sportsmanship award. Again, for those that may not be familiar with that, every single activity has their teams and that's the players going against other players. They vote on one team in the CLC of the nine to say that these guys deserve the sportsmanship. And it ties in with how our fans act, how our team acts, how they carry themselves, how they leave the locker rooms, things like that. The reason I'm bringing this up is that sportsmanship award for our volleyball team happens to be the 100th sportsmanship award that we've gotten since joining the league. We joined the league 17 years ago. The next highest amount is 98 by Brainard. They've been in the league for 44 years. So I did a quick little check here. Now it's going by per year. Seven of the teams are two, are averaging 2.2 sportsmanship awards per year or less. Now there's 25 possible sports that we can get this award in each year. Stock Rapids is averaging 3.9. We're averaging 5.8 a year. So one-fifth, about 20% of our teams get this sportsmanship award, which is a phenomenal percentage considering we're just one of nine in schools. So only one of nine can get it in these activities and we're averaging 5.8. And again, this isn't just, hey, here's the team that they didn't do very well, so we're gonna vote for them. The kids do vote for that. And we've had plenty of teams win the CLC conference competitively and get the sportsmanship in the same year. So that says a lot about what our coaches are doing and most of all, our student athletes and how they carry themselves. So I did want to highlight that one. It was our 100th. We didn't do a big celebration, I probably should have, but it was the 100th sportsmanship trophy we've got since joining the CLC. Any questions you may have for me on any of the activities this fall? Of course, the concerts, we're still going strong. We have the fall concerts and our winter concerts are still going on during these weeks here, both middle school and high school, happening right now. That was one tonight.
This one act play, is that going to go on this week?
Yeah, one act play. So they've, we've already gotten scripts. They've chosen what they're gonna do. And then their competition is January, it's like November 17th, wherever that Friday is. Yep. So they've already, she's already got going on that. And then they really focus on that right now. They just got started and then in January for their competition. So definitely one act play and a sprint play. Yep.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Abrams? All right, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Moving on to our regular board reports, talking about our collateral responsibilities outside of this meeting. Kirby Anderson.
Yes, I will report on the 544 Education Foundation and just some highlights from those meetings. We had, I'm gonna actually go back a little bit here. When we had the classroom wish list, we had 107 requests, which the foundation fully funded 106 of them and one of them just short, so it was $31,558 that went towards the classroom wish list. And this, this giving goes both ways. We've had 103 staff members sign up for payroll deduction, anywhere from $1 to $25 a month, or per check. And then we also raised, have a couple of fundraisers. We did the Taco Night, Out of Pride Night, made over $1,500. And we also did the Back to the Home Service Lunch. We made $2,200. So that's just some of the dollar things going on. At our meeting on Thursday, we talked about, there's a lot of communications going on. There's a fall and winter newsletter that's just been sent out. There's a major donor newsletter that goes out to specific people that have made major donations in the past and that's going out before Christmas. Got $1,500 out of the gift to the Max Day. Scholarship applications will be available at the council office just after the first of the year and also on the website. And there's an alumni email that goes out very soon. So a lot going on there as far as communications. We did welcome one new member, Abby Thermus is our newest board member. She, she is an attorney at Pemberton and she took the place of Mike Rangel, who stepped off the board now after his last term ended. And I believe, oh, we also have, as far as the dollars go, we have about $1.7 million in assets. And we, I guess the news there is that we have contracted with Pickett and Igard to Suzanne Dabith is gonna be our accountant because we're getting up into, we have millions of dollars and we want to have an accountant that's helping us keep track of everything and make sure that we're up to speed on everything that we file. That's about it. Any questions or comments on that one? Otherwise, I'm gonna skip ahead to our finance committee meeting. We did meet on Friday, December 2nd and we covered several items there. There's the truth to taxation information, mostly some of the things we're gonna talk about tonight during the public hearing. The Philsphere 23 budget, the levy, we went through the budget narrative. And then the other thing we talked about was the assigned fund balance. And that's one of the things that kind of relates to my treasurer's report that's coming up here shortly. And when we talk about the treasurer's report, there's, there will be a line and all of you got this in your packet this week. This is the treasurer's report. And at the bottom now, our auditors have recommended that we put how many dollars we have assigned of that general fund balance, which is $3,380,800. And so we also have the detail on that as far as what projects those dollars are assigned to. So those were some of the things that we talked about at that finance committee meeting. And I don't have anything on activities. So any questions or comments on anything?
Okay, thank you, Kirby.
That's for you.
I'll, technically I'll report next. And so today we had the Special Education Cooperative Executive Board and noted that we had a completion of the change of our bylaws, big undertaking. All the school districts, eight school districts have signed up on that. And then with our new director, Jackie Ward, she is enhancing some professional development and taking a look at the programs and infusing some energy and looking to expand some of that as well. And so that's a discussion at the table. She's had a meeting last week to coordinate the eight superintendents from the member districts and talk about kind of a planning, like we're gonna go from here, a little bit strategic, but not maybe as formalized as the strategic plan we did. And so, so that's some of the discussion at the table there. We did approve the audit there today. And so, and then ended the meeting with a discussion about program goal. Went to the Region 1 Board Meeting last week, the technology school district for this side of the state and just talked, we did the review of the audit there. Learned that the time tracker program that they developed has 53 school districts attached to it and they've been, they have three schools doing their payroll outsourcing. And they find, and we're kind of looking at an expansion to that. So that is, that's about all I have. Any questions on that? I'm going, okay.
Missy Hermes already. Okay. Policy Committee did not meet, but staff committee, we, staff development, I should say, met last Monday and it was not, it was, there was a lot of discussion because this committee has pretty much spent their entire budget. And so there's maybe an ask coming for additional staff development dollars for that committee. But we talked about staff development in service days and a keynote speaker. It looks like, depending on his schedule, it'll be a gentleman called Nicholas Ferroni. So I think he has videos online. You can check him out. And also they're developing a cultural competency subcommittee. So remember a few months ago, I said that it looked like a different committee, the Continuing Education Committee was going to take over that duty of looking, of the cultural competency training that teachers have to have to renew their license. And now it looks like that's not happening. It's gonna stay with staff development. And so they're developing a subcommittee that'll look into that.
Okay. Want you? Any questions? Nothing from policy this time? No, took a breather. Okay. Natalie Knutson.
So Wellness Committee met on November 8th. I was unable to attend due to a negotiating, a negotiating meeting that overlapped. But just some notes from the meeting. They talked about a new Mental Health Partnership for Health was there and talked about a new program called Cognito. It's a free program, could possibly be used as a staff development opportunity. They just talked about that it's needing a good leader person. Looks like it's a mental health resource, could count towards suicide prevention training. Districts across the state continue to prioritize professional development opportunities for school and staff. Looks like some school districts around us, Fraser Lake Park, Audubon, Perron, have dipped into it a little bit more. So we'll be waiting to see what comes of that. Jen talked about running a bingo wellness board for the holiday season for the staff, just something to get some engagement and maintain some good habits over the holidays. And then food service, still having some issues getting certain things in. And with pricing increases, they've been utilizing the local stores to get some of their things. One in particular was chicken, that they've been working with service food on sourcing that one. And then this was brought up at a previous Wellness Committee meeting. Lance had brought it up, discussing one of our school board policies. So it looks like they talked about it again, School Board Policy 533. And this is just how it reads. "As a general practice, school staff will not use food or beverages as a reward for academic performance or good behavior unless this practice is allowed by student individual education program or behavior intervention plan and will not withhold foods or beverage punishments." So he had brought up this policy in regards to what's being served for in-school suspension, our rec date treatment programs, having pizza parties in class. So it looks like they talked about some alternatives. Karen Skorsky from Partnership for Health had presented some alternative ideas for how to celebrate in the classroom. So more to come on that. It looks like they're requesting a review of that policy, which we can certainly discuss at our next meeting.
What number did you say?
533.
533, yep. So yeah, beyond that, that's kind of the bulk of it. And then as far as buildings and grounds, there's just continued movement. The Lincoln School, the rec, finishing that odd man project, so.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Knutson? All right, moving on to Matt Limkey.
Like I said, there's a school board meeting on Thursday, so I have nothing to worry for them. Also, High School League did meet on Thursday, December 1st. And some highlights there is that with boys' basketball, they are just moving that to Williams Arena because of, sorry, for some conflicts they were having at the state tournament for March 21st to the 25th. Also this year for baseball, they are moving it to CHS Field instead of Target Field because of some conflicts with the Twins home stand at Target Field. So they will be playing where the Saints play. And so they had a change of that. The other one that was probably the bigger one that they adopted was adoption of the activities through development of our emergency status program process. They've been working on this for, I believe it was, if I see this right, I think it was like five months. And they had a committee, actually it's been longer than that. But they came up with a recommendation of basically how to, pretty much process through adoptions of different sports. When people come to Minnesota High School League to make a sanctioned sport, what's the process that they're gonna follow through with? And so one of the ones they've been talking about for quite some time is the board of directors approved a proposal to classify boys' volleyball as an emergency, emergency sport, emerging sport, not emergency, emerging sport, beginning with the 23, 2024 school year. And then they approved the proposal to include the recommendation of boys' volleyball becoming a fully sanctioned sport for the 2024, 2025 school year. Again, remember that's the state of Minnesota that doesn't mean the Central Lakes Conference or even Fergus Falls will have boys' volleyball. But it is moving that they are going to actually sanction that sport for approval and that was again, going to be happening in the spring. So anyway, like I said, they just developed a process, procedures for people to follow if they're trying to have a sport become sanctioned by Minnesota High School League. Couple other proposals that they have for advisory, and this has come before, is again, adding a third class to tennis, a mercy rule for soccer. So the proposal would be if a team is up by five goals or more in the second half, that they'd have running clock. Another one that's kind of interesting is the regular season overtime. The proposal would be to eliminate regular season overtime games. Result would record as a tie. So that's kind of an interesting one that they had. And then another one that they have, they're talking about is just in football. And again, football always has some things. And that's about trying to actually seed quarterfinal games for, from nine, eight, from nine-man players to, to class five for football. Right now, they kind of go by region. So geographically where you're located is kind of where you get in a plane. And they're looking to actually try to seed them. So you might be playing somebody way on the cusp from the state. Yeah, so you got some travel in that. So anyway, that was just a proposal, not that they recommended it, but it's just a proposal that was put. So, and yeah, and that's all I have to report.
All right. Any questions for Matt Limkey? Okay, Steven Biggessa.
My report was pretty much taken care of in the last school board meeting. With the curriculum review, we met last month. Amelia, Ms. Lamar went over World's Best Workforce and then the courses that we had approved in the last board meeting. Like, to be about a dozen or 11 of them there. So I mean, my report would be just redundant of what we talked about last week. So that's all I have.
Okay. Any follow-up questions for Steven on that? And then we'll turn to Superintendent Drake for his report.
Well, good evening.
Evening.
Want to start out with some thank yous. First of all, we've continued to have some really wonderful concerts in our building. The Senior High Choir Concert was fantastic, very full house. And they covered a lot of ground. They sang many, many songs, a wide variety of music types. And they were very, very efficient in getting the various ensembles out and off the stage. Because with all the music that they sung, I would say that concert was done by about 8:15. So very impressed with how that was organized. I had a conflict with another commitment for the fifth and sixth grade concert, but I heard that was very, very well done as well. And then tonight, we have a seventh and eighth grade choir concert. I also want to just specifically thank Elaine for all her work. Elaine works, you wouldn't even want to start to tally the hours that she puts in on behalf of the school district. She is as professional as they come and has the heart of this district always, first and foremost, and it's welfare. So we're very blessed to have her and thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Some congratulations. This is really, really good news. Ethan Soland, I was in his class about two weeks ago and he gave an update on his stock market game teams at that point and said they were doing extremely well. Now, keep in mind, the market has not been all that favorable at points in the last six months or so. But his teams finished up not today, but a week ago. And in the state of Minnesota, his teams finished first, second, fourth, and fifth. The entire state, which is just remarkable. The words down below are from him, just thanking a wonderful group of students for all the time and effort they have put into this project. And to reward them for their results, they will be traveling to an award ceremony down in Minneapolis on Thursday, December 15th. And this is a list of the teams. And again, I just want to congratulate each of these young men and women for really their remarkable accomplishment. And special thanks to Ethan Soland as their advisor as well. We can be very, very proud of the work these students are accomplishing and wish they were in charge of my portfolio. They may have very lucrative careers at some point later on in life. Facility updates. So finally, this has been a long slog, but we do have the permitting approved by the state for the commercial teaching kitchen at Roosevelt. We do have an ALC class slated to use that space at the change in semester, so around January 20th. It is going to be very, very much nip and tuck whether that commercial teaching kitchen is done quite at that point. So the first couple of units may involve no bake cookies or something, I'm not sure what. But they will, they will get at it as soon as they can. It's just gonna be very tight. And then the roof snow and ice mitigation system installation at Roosevelt, I believe, has been completed. They were nearly done last Friday morning. And I'm kind of assuming that they finished up with the last pieces there. Another facility update that I do not have on this, on the screen, but we did pay about half of the remaining retainer to Comstock for additional work that they had completed on Phase 1 of Lincoln. And there is about $80,000 of retainage still remaining and just a couple of things that need to be adjusted on that project. And then that one will officially be completely in the books. Community conversations. Principal Hearst and Amelia Lamar, our curriculum director, and I had a nice conversation with the regional couple about our curriculum, about communication to parents. They did indicate that there are, say, some private donors out there that would be willing to purchase materials that our teachers would pick out, that would enhance or augment our curriculum and instruction, which is very gracious and generous on their part. And then they did, as a reminder to the district, just asked that any time that we're doing any type of student surveying, that we would give parents a notice on those surveys so that they, if they have questions or concerns or want to look over any content on the surveys, would have an opportunity to do so. And this is consistent with our district's policy. Uh, we do not, as a matter of practice, uh, do a lot of student surveys. Uh, the big one that people tend to hear about is the Minnesota Student Survey, which is done every three years, uh, and that was done, uh, last spring. And we did, uh, send out, uh, parent notices in advance to allow families to opt their child out of that survey if they, uh, wanted to. And then some upcoming events. Uh, not only is it a busy time of the year with the concert seri- series, uh, in season, but we are right in the middle now of our winter sports season. So we have a number of events going on this week. These are just, uh, essentially, other than the knowledgeable meet at Concordia, they won't have a ton of knowledgeable meets in their season, so I did list that. These are home events here. Uh, so people in the community want to get out and see some, uh, sporting events. There's plenty on the docket this week. And then a notice, um, uh, went out this morning that due to the impending weather, the FFA fruit, uh, delivery will be postponed until next Monday. Finally, uh, talking about weather, I did have a column a couple weeks ago about weather-related decisions, and, uh, we're on the cusp of potentially a decision, uh, that could impact us over the next day or so. This evening, we will launch into a winter weather warning. Uh, what's kind of tricky about a lot of these is if you see that dark, uh, purple patch down at the bottom, that is not very far from Fergus Falls, and that's an ice warning. Um, and then what also makes this one tricky is that, um, although the event may start tonight, uh, the freezing rain, et cetera, sleet is not necessarily scheduled to start until slightly after five AM, uh, tomorrow morning. So you're potentially trying to make a good decision before you really know what the weather is fully going to deliver to you. But there is a guarantee of precipitation of some form tomorrow, and then winds, wind speeds picking up into the, uh, thirties and maybe a little bit higher, so it will potentially be a little bit of a tricky situation on the weather front. And with that, uh, we'll turn it over to questions.
With the surveys that you mentioned earlier, I know, um, I've attended some classes where students have sent out surveys to each other as a part of a requirement for a class. Is that covered under that too, that policy?
I'll have to read that through really, really carefully. As I recall it, it is school-initiated surveys. But, um, a- as you just mentioned, Missy, as part of, uh, uh, one of our upper-level English courses, and the, um, studies that students do in relation to the proposals and papers that they write, does get feedback.
I think that's a component of that class.
It's a component of the instruction, yes, very much so. So I will have to read through that, um, really carefully to see if it's only talking about surveys initiated by the school itself, by that meaning more teacher or administration, uh, versus, um, student compiled surveys. My initial guess is it's gonna be both.
Okay.
That it's gonna be both, and so, um, that would be another situation where we would need to give parents, uh, heads up that the surveys were going on, excuse me, and, uh, they would have a chance to opt their children out if they so chose.
Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent? So no decision vote tomorrow yet?
Not, five to five-thirty.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have our general consent items, and, um, we'll continue with that. Um, consideration for approval of minutes from our last board meeting on November twenty-eighth, and consideration of approval of the bills and treasures report, which Kirby will tell us.
Yes, bills and treasures report. Um, our, uh, again, all of you got this in your packet, so as far as the treasures report goes, um, our, uh, total, uh, total, uh, funds are, were from twenty million down to about eighty million. A lot of, uh, a lot of bills last month, not as much money coming in as, as usually what happens. Um, some, uh, a couple of our funds, just to highlight, our community ed was about a minus twenty-nine thousand last month, and it is, as of today, was, um, seventy-seven thousand positive. Um, food service continues to do well also, went from five seventy-seven up to seven thirty-three. So, uh, some, some good news there, especially on the community ed, um, as far as the, uh, deposit balance. Renee and Natalie and I did meet at quarter to five today and, and reviewed, uh, seven pages of bills. And, uh, some of the bigger ones went out. Uh, one of the, one of the bigger bills that, that affected our fund balance was, um, they had about four hundred and fourteen thousand that went to IQ Academy, K-12 Management. And that four hundred and fourteen thousand, um, there was three different checks. And that particular one is, it was reconciliation from twenty-one dash twenty-two fiscal year. And we had another three hundred and thirty thousand for this fiscal year, so there's four, five, six, seven, five, seven, five hundred, seven hundred and some thousand dollars right there. Twelve thousand or thirteen thousand to Region Six Eight for volleyball. Again, just highlighting some of the, some of the checks that we questioned as far as, not really, uh, what we like to do is go through and just pick out different items that we all see every month. Um, Pitney Bowls, for instance, we hadn't seen that one before, that was four thousand dollars for postage, which is going up again. Um, balanced gymnastics, we had three different checks that were cut for six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the reason there was that, uh, we paid them, I think, nine times that, so it's sixty thousand per year, but they hadn't billed us, so we just paid them now for September, October, and November, in one month. Lots of, lots of little stuff. This one for sixty-one thousand, that went to, uh, Cassette Electric, and that was for, uh, some more of the retrofitting of our lighting over there to go to LEDs, and so we'll see some rebates coming back from Marcell Power, as well as, uh, reduced usage in the future for those lights. At, uh, eight thousand dollars in concrete work over at Cleveland and Adams. And, um, we had a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five thousand that went to tech check. Part of that was for Cisco equipment, and I think part of it was for the March security. And I think that was something that we've talked about before as far as, um, where they're at and, and what we're gonna do in the future, so. So those were some of the items that we talked about, and then I did mention that we, again, on the front page, this, we have the assigned general fund balance of three point four million dollars, and that's highlighted, uh, and working out, and so we'll be doing that each month, uh, per the auditors request. So that is my treasures report, and the bills. So, thanks Natalie and Renee first, thanks for always being, answering all our questions.
Okay. And then Kirsten out, and I'll turn to Elaine Jacobson for review of that.
Thank you, Melanie, good evening, everyone. Um, just, uh, my report's short, which is a good thing. Um, under support staff hires, we have Faith Stowers as a special education, her profession at Adams, um, starting twelve nineteen, next Monday, and along with Heather Dirkman, a part-time RN nurse, um, three hours a week, along with Brooke McCon, who is twelve hours a week. They're sharing a part-time position that was left vacant by Mandy Ellison's resignation. And then Scott Samuelson, mechanical worker, um, effective right after the new year. And if Scott's name sounds familiar, he worked with us, um, previously, and is, will be returning back to us, so that's exciting news for us. Under certified staff hire, Vanessa Jacobson, just an increase in contract. She's an IQ reading interventionist, and, um, she was at a point five, and we're increasing it to a point six zero zero two FTE, um, effective today. So I would recommend all those for board approval.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
Somewhat.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and any discussion on these items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Not my eye on the clock, we still have a few minutes, so we'll move on to new business. Would someone entertain a motion to approve the high school band marjorie trip to St. Louis, June twenty-eighth through July second, next year? I'll make that motion, all right, is there a second?
A second.
I'll take Stephen on that. And then, um, any discussion on that? I just wanted to correct the record, when we discussed it last month, I said it was a band trip where there had been student behavior, that was a choir trip. So I want to correct that one myself on that. Anything else?
So students who have graduated will still be able to go on this band trip?
Yes, they will. And, um, it's, uh, just, it's good to be attentive to it, that, um, they might be adults and they might be graduated, and, uh, but we, you know, in, in the communication from the band department, both at the meeting and then after the fact, in emails, they're confident of the, um, character of the, the students that are involved, so.
Good sportsmanship.
Good sportsmanship, yes.
Okay.
All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And we have a resolution of the school board, governing board, supporting a form application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. This is an annual resolution, and I will go through it. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth and to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the Fergus Falls Public Schools Governing Board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts to provide seminars or training opportunities or support for specific school functions for students, faculty members, officials, and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fergus Falls Public Schools Governing Board supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
All offer a resolution and move for its adoption.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving, oh, say aye or nay when the clerk asks. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemp.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Diggleston.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right. Looks like it's six o'clock, isn't it, almost five fifty-nine left?
Five fifty-nine.
You can give one more.
One more, one more.
Um, I would like to entertain a motion for a new high school course proposal, the ninety-twelve computer science slash technology course called Intro to Apps and Gaming, effective for next school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Would someone, uh, make a motion to introduce that course?
Somewhat.
And a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? Carrie Zinkick, Sick Inc. is, um, gonna pull this together if we approve it. And so it's kind of exciting to see, uh, computer science back on the agenda.
I love it.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. And with that, we will pause. Superintendent Drake will take the podium, I'm presuming, right, for a presentation on technology and internet safety policies.
So this statement's been just slightly enhanced from a year ago. Uh, as internet access became a well-established practice in public education, school districts have adopted technology plans for the implementation of internet access. District Policy Five Twenty-four, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety, does govern the use of the internet for the purposes of education to include classroom activities, educational research, and professional or career development activities and uses deemed necessary for the operation of the organization. As part of this policy, the district utilizes internet content filtering software, GoGuardian, to block access through the school's network to visual depictions that would be considered inappropriate or harmful. Policy Five Twenty-four is currently being reviewed by the district as new guidance has emerged around, one, parental technology provider notification, two, school-issued devices, and three, screen time limitations for children in preschool and junior.
Okay. So to my understanding, Superintendent Drake helped me out here, that the, the purpose of, um, having a public meeting specifically to discuss technology and internet safety policy is just that because it can be a concerning, really concerning facet of education, that we invite the public, uh, to come. And at this time, I'll see if there's any public interaction. Anybody wants to make comments or questions about internet safety? All right. And does that conclude really the? There we have that one, we're done enough. Yeah, okay. Now, our, our finance director, Renee Macklet, oh, say again.
Macklet, yes.
Macklet, yeah, I want to put a, well, whatever, okay, Macklet.
We're Mac for short.
Gonna review our taxes payable, okay, thank you.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's public hearing. Uh, this meeting is probably better known as the Truth in Taxation meeting. Uh, the reason why we do this is just to allow public input before we adopt the final levy. Um, so tonight, I am planning to talk about our budget, um, the levy, and this will be the levy that's payable in calendar year two thousand twenty-three, and it will be our revenue in our fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. And then also, I'll talk a little bit about the factors that affect our levy. So on the left-hand side here, you can see the different buttons. Um, so we have the general fund, the food service and community service, those make up our total operating funds. We also have building construction, uh, debt service, trust and agency, and then other. So, um, for fiscal year twenty-two, this is, um, the beginning balance for all of our funds combined was ten million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and three. So beginning year, um, for fiscal year twenty-two was actually July first of two thousand twenty-one. So our fiscal year runs July first through June thirtieth. Um, as you know, we just finished our audit recently, so the audited revenues were forty-six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen. And the audited expenditures were forty-one million, six hundred thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. And so our ending fund balance for all of the funds combined at end of June was sixteen million, forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six. Now, if we take a look at our budget for the upcoming year, actually, it's our current year. We adopted this budget in June already, um, we're almost midway through the year already. The, uh, budgeted revenues for the total funds were forty-one million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven. Budgeted expenditures were forty-two million, seventy-five thousand, six ninety-seven. So our projected fund balance for end of next year, um, will be slightly less. It's projected to be around fifteen million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen. And I'm not planning to go into a lot of details on this, basically, because this is all on our website. Um, there's fifty-three pages out there of details for your enjoyment reading. So, um, if you, uh, do go through that and have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Um, I'll certainly try and answer any questions that you might have on that. Here is a, uh, table that we looked at back in September. So this is our proposed, uh, payable levy for two thousand twenty-three. Um, the amount has not changed at all since September. We, at that time, we had preliminary levy that we adopted was the maximum, and that was seven million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, and so, if you look and compare it here to the current levy for this year, um, total general fund, um, the levy for that portion of it, um, is increasing by about four hundred and forty-four thousand for the upcoming year. Uh, community ed will see a slight increase in the levy for that, um, twenty-nine hundred. And then for debt service, we're looking at an increase of about four hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three. And just to comment a little bit on the increase for the debt service, um, the main reasons are, um, two, really. One was anticipated abatement bonds that we included in the levy, um, for parking lots. And then the second reason was for retainage of debt service excess. And these are in anticipation of the Lincoln Phase Two project that we've been working on. Um, if we didn't have those two items in this, we'd be looking at a levy increase of about six point eight four percent. Um, but with these included, it does, um, bring our levy increase to twelve point seven percent. However, I'd like to point out that this increase is really only a snapshot in time because it's comparing it to our current levy. So the current levy for this year was six million, eight hundred and five thousand. Um, and so I think it's more important to look at this over a longer range of time here. And so, um, on this report here, this chart, the blue column shows our net levy. So on the right-hand side there, you can see our proposed levy, um, the seven point six million. And then for fiscal year twenty-three, you're seeing the previous levy, so it was six point eight million. So that's where we're seeing the twelve point seven percent increase. But really, if you look at the blue column and compare it to the last few years, the levy amount is, um, fairly in line with where it has been in recent years. So now the orange columns on this chart, these- these depict the adjusted net tax capacity. So this is our property tax values times classification rates. And so classification rates are based on the property type. So whether you have residential, commercial, industrial, those are all signed a tax rate. And so that's how they come up with our adjusted net tax capacity. And so as you can see here in these orange lines, or orange columns, our adjusted net tax capacity has been gradually increasing, as you know, with your property values going up. So now, the green line at the top is the tax rate. And so what this is, is really just the net levy divided by the adjusted net tax capacity. So even though we're seeing a 12.7% increase in the levy and is from a tax rate standpoint, it's really only an increase of 1.4% from current year. So it was 27.1% last year, and it's 28.6% for next year. This is probably better representation of what you might be able to expect for your own taxes for next year. But certainly, your own taxes are going to depend on the value of your property and also, you know, if that value changes. There are certainly several factors that affect our property taxes. There are, several of these are out of our control, though. So one of those that we talked about now was the change in the value or the classification of your property. Also, the value of the whole property in the district as a whole. And so our funding that we receive per pupil is equalized. And so we receive so much in aid from the state and so much as a levy. The wealthier we are as a property tax district, the more we're going to pay in levy, and the less we'll receive in-state aid. On the flip side, if it's a poorer district, property-wise or property-value-wise, the more we'll receive in aid and less we'll pay in levy. So all of that is based on formulas that MDE sets for us. And so they have all these formulas set, and then they do make changes to them from year to year. And so the details of the levy are actually in this, like, 39-page levy limitation certification report. And so MDE sets the maximum levy that we can certify for several different categories. And so this is really different from how cities and counties create their levies. In our case, the maximum is often set by MDE. So, and it is common for school districts to adopt that maximum levy. So that is what we adopted in September. Other factors affecting our levy include enrollment numbers, of course, since we receive so much money per pupil, the adjustment from prior years, because our initial aid is based on the estimated enrollment. So once we go through the year and we have the actual daily membership, they do adjust our aid that we receive for the rest of that year. And then, of course, we do our local decisions. And we had already talked about one of these being our climbing for the Lincoln Phase 2. So that can affect our levy as well. So next steps, I would just ask you to adopt our final levy at $7.6 million, which is the same as what we had for the college levy. And then I would proceed with certifying this to the county auditor, submitting our certification of compliance to the Minnesota Department of Revenue, and also sending final certification to MDE. So with that, let me know if there's any questions. And if I don't know the answers, I'll certainly try and get back to you.
Just on the one, if you want to go back a couple of slides, just because sometimes people can glide through stuff a little bit. Nope, back near the, yeah, right there. So just on the change in valuation of properties, you know, in districts. So equalization aid depends on a district's property wealth per pupil.
Yes.
So meaning basically is that as our property taxes, our wealth of our district goes up, the actual potential that the state would pay us goes down, correct?
I'll say the potential, yes. The formulas are so complicated that I don't even want to try to explain it. But for the most part, yes. That's my understanding of it.
Should we go through this one?
Sure.
So this one right here shows, should be from that tax rate, or the tax rate, 27.17% up to 25.59. So it says it's an increase, so the difference in these two numbers is 1.42. But if you take this number and divide it by that one, you're going to see about a 5.2% increase in the rate itself, correct?
Oh, yes. I guess I didn't divide that.
My point is, is that the tax rate is going up 5.2%, but at the same time, everything we buy, everything that, everything we buy has gone up, that much or more. I mean, I don't care if it's fuel or if it's curriculum.
Food was, what, 11% last year?
Yeah, CPI. So, I mean, that's, to me, that's, we're able to hold that line. I think our enrollment numbers, I believe, from our projected enrollment for next year is 3115. I laid it down from 3168 a couple of years ago.
Correct, right.
So the cost per pupil that we have, I think, has actually gone down just a little bit in the proposal from what it was in our last full year of 2021.
Right.
So all those things show, I think, we're, I think, as a treasurer, I think we're doing a good job of holding the line on expenses and being conservative with taxpayers' money is what I think we're doing, and still providing the best education that we can at a reasonable cost.
Good analysis, thanks. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So any questions from the public or comments? All right. Then that will conclude that portion, specifically called the Public Schools Taxes Payable Meeting. And we'll pick up with our agenda. We will have a vote on the levy for taxes payable, just a little bit down. I would like to entertain a motion for a request for an additional full-time special education teaching position beginning January 23rd, which is the second semester, and to include in that motion the hire of Sophie Steinbrenner. Someone make that motion.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion?
What building is that?
Cleveland.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of adding that position and that staff person, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hand in hand, I think, probably, we're going to request an additional full-time special education paraprofessional position. Would someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
A second.
And is that also for Cleveland?
It's for McKinley.
Oh, for McKinley.
And it's just dealing with because of an IEP?
So it's not hand in hand?
Okay.
Got it. Any other questions, comments about that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right.
Who seconded it?
Who seconded it?
Natalie.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay. So, next looking for a motion to approve the school athletic training and sports medicine contract between the school district and Lake Region Healthcare, effective for the '22, '23 school year. Would someone offer that motion?
Some moved.
And is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving? Were you going to say something?
I was just going to say I'm glad we have them.
Yes.
Yeah. So that kid who was, his life got saved last year.
Yes.
Okay.
At the soccer game.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That's approved. We have, I'm looking for a motion to approve a levy for taxes payable in 2023 in the amount of $7,671,286.35. Would someone offer that motion?
Some moved.
All right, and a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And now, now we come to the portion of the meeting where we are going to take a motion to, oh, we're going to have to move to close it, don't we? Yes, we do. Oh, okay. We're going to move to close the meeting. The board's going to hang tight. We're going to have a discussion on the superintendent's evaluation. We will reopen the meeting and then, and then stay convened for a little session.
After, very good.
Yeah, after, very good. Sorry, a little funny. Would someone make a motion to close the meeting?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor of closing the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Meeting is closed, thank you. If you're going to about band concert from here...